Our May 3, 2022 City Council Meeting. It is officially called to order at 8:30 a.m. We will start with our Chaplain Prayer and Pledges. And today, we're going to have Gary and Marcella Jenkins lead us in both. If you would all stand, please.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council, and all of those that are here today. Will you join with me in a word of prayer? Father in heaven, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you to say thank you for another day that you have made. We thank you, Father, for allowing us to see a new day filled with new mercies and grace. Father, we pray also for not only our city council and for the business that will be conducted here. Your word says that the powers that be are ordained of you. So, Father, we thank you for ordaining this governmental body. But we also pray for those outside of this city, especially in the nation of Ukraine. The war continues there. Lives are being destroyed. People are being killed needlessly. And we ask you, in Jesus's name, Lord, to set principalities and powers into position to help stop the war in Ukraine. I pray, Father, for everyone across our nation and all of those in governmental authority. Thank you for the members of our city council. Thank you for our mayor and those in city government. And we pray that what is said and done here today will be done to your glory. In Jesus's name we pray. Let everybody say amen.
And I will ask all of those here today with SAISD to please come forward. Welcome, all of you. We're glad you're here today. San Angelo Independent School District educators and staff impact the future of San Angelo daily through their care for and dedication and commitment to the children of our city. Their impact happens from the moment a child steps on a bus, walks through the school door, is fed a nourishing breakfast, and throughout the day until the last bell and beyond. Educators and the entire SAISD team make a difference in each child's life. And with nearly 14,000 students, this is an incredible impact on our community. Today, we acknowledge the special commitment our SAISD educators and staff have on the well-being of our children. They provide a relevant and inspiring education, preparing future-ready graduates. These graduates may one day care for your loved ones as a nurse or doctor at a local hospital, address cybersecurity threats that impact our community, create beautiful artwork or music for others to enjoy, or go on to teach the next generation of San Angelans. At SAISD, they often say, "Our people make the difference." And today, we honor the San Angelo difference makers, those who inspire and prepare our students and support their hopes and dreams. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, and together with San Angelo Independent School District, do hereby recognize May 6, 2022, as SAISD Difference Maker Day, and thank all SAISD educators and staff for the dedicated service to our students and families, and urge all citizens to acknowledge the occasion of this day.
On behalf of Mr. Parker, our Board President, Mr. Dindal, our Vice President, Dr. Detloff, our Superintendent, and our other district leaders, we would like to say thank you. Our children are our most prized possession. They hold the key to our future. Some will have jobs that don't even exist today. If it's the bus driver who first greets them and takes them to school safely, the child nutrition worker who feeds them their meals for nourishment, the office staff that greets them, an instructional assistant, classroom teacher, interventionist, principal, assistant principal, custodian, the list goes on and on. These difference makers guide, support, nurture, and grow our future leaders in greatest investment each day. That's why we say in San Angelo ISD, "Our people make the difference." Once again, thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Dr. Gomez, and Max Parker, Bill Dindal, and our leadership team. I just want to reiterate the value of partnerships in our city. When we look across our city and county, we just have incredible partnerships that have allowed us to thrive during the last, really, 30-month period. So, I think San Angelo is successful due to those partnerships and due to that constant communication with city and government officials, our elected officials. There are certainly many political hot potatoes being tossed around. And I think because our entire county, our entire city, our city council, our chamber, Goodfellow Air Force Base, our elected officials work closely and concert together, with higher education too, our city continues to thrive. So, I just think it's a blessing to be here in San Angelo. As you may remember, earlier this year, we had over 250 educators from across the state of Texas embark on a journey and open the gates to San Angelo. And consistently, their remarks were, "I can't believe you guys are in such close contact with all of your elected officials, your city leaders, and your community partners." It's really remarkable and unbelievable. So, I think sometimes we're in that fishbowl, and we don't step out and realize just the value of San Angelo and all the partnerships we have. So, thank you for contributing to the success of our difference makers in San Angelo. And we know that public schools are still the cornerstone of our democracy. Thank you.
I'm just going to add, we really, truly appreciate our educators and all of our employees, as Dr. Gomez said, from the beginning of the day, the bus drivers, to our coaches and staff that do the extracurriculars, day in, day out. And so, we do invite the community to join with us for San Angelo ISD Difference Maker Day this Friday, and just let them feel the love and let them know they're appreciated because they do touch the lives of children of San Angelo every single day. So, thank you. And I also want to say thank you, City Council, because y'all do the hard infrastructure work that really sets the tone for the future, and it supports what these children will someday make a difference with as well. So, thank you.
What a great way to start this city council meeting. Thank you, everybody. Our next proclamation is Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. I know we have some folks in the audience. Please come forward. Honda Rosas MC, as members of the Region 5 Texas Council of Clubs and Independence in collaboration and support of the National Safety Council, text dot and local motorcycle enthusiasts would like to remind all road users that the month of May marks a national recognition of Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Motorists are reminded of the frequency and higher seasonal return of motorcycle enthusiasts to Texas roadways during this month. Due to their smaller size, motorcycles may easily be overlooked in regular traffic flow. Motorists are encouraged to always be aware of motorcycles on all roadways when approaching intersections, when performing lane changes, as well as whenever motorists near or pass other vehicles, including motorcycles. Motorcyclists are encouraged to operate their motorcycles in a defensive manner and within the rules of the road. Motorcyclists ask that as motorists drive, they take a few extra seconds to look twice for motorcycles, both during Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and throughout the year to promote overall safety. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage everyone to share the road safely.
Good morning. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, Madam Mayor, and everyone present today. I'll be very brief. My name is Gypsy Serena, and I am a longtime resident of San Onofre, Texas. I grew up here. Just want to throw out a couple of things to keep you aware and maybe pass along the way. On average, at least one motorcycle rider dies every day in a crash on our streets and highways. Husbands or wives, someone's daughter, son, brother, sister, mother, father, grandfather, grandmother, uncle, aunt. 519 motorcycle riders died in motorcycle vehicle crashes in 2021. Seven, that's a 7% increase over the previous year. And even though motorcyclists compromise less than 2% of vehicles in Texas, they account for 12% of the fatalities in 2021. In 2021, the city of San Angelo had a total of 41 motorcycle traffic crashes. These crashes resulted in two motorcyclists' deaths and six motorcyclists seriously injured. However, within the San Angelo district, there were a total of 97 motorcycle traffic crashes, which resulted in 11 motorcyclist deaths and 28 motorcyclists being seriously injured. The Look Twice for Motorcycle campaign is an effort to save lives in our roadways. We can all be a part of that, whether you ride in a cage, as we call it, or uncaged as a freedom rider. We can all be part of that. All the vehicles are due respect on our roadway. So, we ask that you ride safe and arrive alive and the streak in Texas. Please, we ask you to look twice anytime you're on the roads. Believe me when I tell you, my 95-year-old father and my 91-year-old mother will greatly appreciate it, as will all the families, all the children, all the grandchildren of the people present here today. We appreciate you looking twice. Thank you for your time.
Our last proclamation is for Historic Preservation Month. So, Dell, would you please come forward? And Monica? The month of May is nationally recognized as Historic Preservation Month. The National Trust for Historic Preservation established the theme "People Saving Places" for this year's campaign. National and local preservation groups, state historical societies, and business and civic organizations across the country come together to celebrate Historic Preservation Month to demonstrate all the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. Downtown San Angelo Inc. has made it their mission to promote the preservation of our past, the very past that shows our city's sense of brilliance and creativity. Downtown San Angelo consists of 51 properties containing historical attributes and significant architectural design. These structures are connections to our past, reminding us of our great city's ingenuity and progression towards our future. This month is of great importance as we thank our local historic preservation groups and the passionate individuals who have saved and protected our city's notable history. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as National Historic Preservation Month in San Angelo, Texas, and call upon citizens to support the continued efforts of preservation in our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. The beginning of historic preservation movement began with a focus on individual monuments. It has since then evolved from a focus on monuments to archaeology to neighborhoods. Historic preservation is a fundamental tool for strengthening communities. It is also proven to be an effective tool for sustainable buildings, historic buildings, downtown revitalization, heritage tourism, and contributions to historic sites, trails, and corridors that lead to outdoor activity. The National Historic Preservation Act specifically noted that the historical and cultural foundations of the nation should be preserved as a living part of community life and development in order to give a sense of orientation to the American people. And further that, the preservation of this irreplaceable heritage is in the public interest so that its vital legacy of cultural, educational, aesthetic, inspirational, economic, and energy benefits will be maintained and enriched for future generations of Americans. Historic preservation, also, most importantly, is an important tool for economic development. Downtown San Angelo Inc. is proud to celebrate Historic Preservation Month and is also proud of the people who helped save our places and our history here within our city. Today, as you all may know, is the San Angelo Area Foundation's largest online giving day. We hope that you do consider making a contribution to Downtown San Angelo to help us continue our mission of downtown revitalization, economic vitality, and historic preservation. Thank you.
Check it, check out our website. There's quite a bit of information dedicated to Preservation Month this month. So, take a look at that and thank both the mayor and city council for, and city staff for all the help they provide us in keeping our mission alive. Thank you.
At this point, we will move into our public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience today who would like to offer public comment? If so, please come forward and state your SMD area, if you have one.
Diane, good morning. I'm Diane Bays. I'm the Vice President of the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization and Discover San Angelo. I live at 3544 Black Buck Trail in Buffalo Heights neighborhood. This week is National Travel and Tourism Week, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew that. This is our 39th year in celebrating this, this austerity holiday for our industry. We, on Tuesdays, wear red all across the United States. This is a program brought to us by the U.S. Travel Association, so it's Wear Red Tuesday. Two of my staff are here, Jasmine and Jana. So, we are celebrating that day today. Just to let you know, the impact of the travel and tourism industry in San Angelo, $222.5 million is spent by visitors in 2021 on total direct travel spending. $74 million in industry earnings and 3,200 jobs. So, if you think about the largest employer in our city, and you think of all of those industry businesses getting together, we represent a large number of jobs in San Angelo. And the taxes those visitors pay are almost $24 million in local and state sales taxes. So, visitor spending saves each San Angelo household $643 per year in taxes in 2021, which is about a week's worth of income for a number of people. So, if you think about that, could you go a week without getting paid? Most of us could not. 51% of retail sales tax, 51% of retail sales tax is paid by out-of-town visitors into San Angelo. It's a great impact in our community. So, it's also Small Business Week. Majority of the businesses made up in the tourism and travel industry in San Angelo are small businesses. So, we encourage you to be a tourist in your own town. Go out, see what there is to see and do. Go to discoversanangelo.com and find out that information, and then become great ambassadors to our community so the visitor has a great experience once they're here, because it all starts with a visit. So, next Tuesday at noon at the Staples at Fort Concho, I will be speaking about the future of travel at our Chamber Luncheon. I hope you will enjoy that in, that time and come and fellowship with us as we talk about the importance of the future of travel. Thank you.
Well, Diane, let me just make a comment. Well, if 51% of the sales tax dollars are from visitors, then what we need to do is encourage the citizens who live in San Angelo to spend local, because the reality is, the largest percent of our sales tax dollars should come from our local citizens, not from outside people. But we're glad they are here, and that means that our citizens are spending their tax dollars in other cities, which support other cities. We need to continue to emphasize, spend local, shop local, and then let the tourists be the cream of the crop. Thank you. Any further public comment today? Seeing none, we will now move into the consent agenda. I will ask city council members if there's any item that they would like pulled from the consent agenda, starting with Larry.
No. Lucy?
I'd like to pull Item C, please. With that, let's go ahead and have a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So, move.
So, move by Harry. Second by Lucy. Any public comment on the agenda, the consent agenda items? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 6-0. Carl, if you'd like to come forward and talk about this Rand Sculpture at Civic League Park?
Yes, we're asking for authorization to, quick orientation. Civic League Park, the sculpture is located here. It's called the Rand Sculpture, and we're asking for authorization to remove the sculpture. Do you want me to go through this? It's called the Rand Sculpture. The artist is John Ramondi. It's classified as a geometric abstraction sculpture. It was dedicated to John's brother, Randy, hence the name Rand. The piece was created in 1979 with the help of Central High School Shop Class. It was a school district project and funded with some grant funds constructed by the students with the design assistance of the artist. The materials are quartet steel. It's designed to rust and give that appearance of a rusty look, and the condition of the sculpture is deteriorating rapidly. Picture of it in 1979 with the shop class, and even our Al Torres is shown there in that picture. I'm not sure exactly which student that is, but he's there.
Is Al in the audience today? Okay, so we won't know which one he is.
There's a color picture of it in 1979 with the artist. Here's how it looks recently with the, this large lower spire has collapsed. It's pictured here without the spire. There it is when it fell last August. We've removed it, and it's at the shop. Just a few pictures showing the deterioration. A lot of the supports are failing. See the excessive lack, loss of integrity. And that's, again, that's how it looks today. I've been here 22 years. When I first got here, within a few years, let me back up a little bit, I noticed that the irrigation was spraying onto the sculpture. And I knew that would accelerate the deterioration, so I had it redone to back off the irrigation and to put drip irrigation around the base of it for some limited plantings. Let me see if it'll show. We did add some, some plantings. But it, it just continued to deteriorate, and it's going to, it would take a big effort to try to get it repaired, reestablished the way it is supposed to be. We took this item to the Art Commission last fall. They recommended removal. We spoke with the artist. They don't, they're not wanting the sculpture back. We asked them if they'd like it back. He said he didn't want it back. He did want the plaque that's located at the base somewhere out there, and that's reflected in the resolution we're asking for you to consider. So.
There are a lot of products out there that can be applied to steal to keep the rust from deteriorating. Have we been doing that? Because one of the problems is when you take this out of the park, what do you have to replace it there that is some sort of sculpture or art of some sort? Because it adds a dimension to the park. And the question mark is, did we apply any rust treatment products to this sculptor along the way to help preserve it?
No, it's quartet steel. It's not, you're supposed to leave it that way.
So, it's supposed to deteriorate?
It's supposed to rust. And the way it's designed, it trapped, it trapped and caught a lot of water that did accelerate the rust. If it didn't have so many places where the water could catch, I think it's just part of the design that it caught a lot of water that accelerated the rusting. But as far as I know, there's nothing to apply to it to, to slow up the rusting.
We have nothing to replace it with.
To that? I was just looking at that picture of those kids in 1979 out there by that, and it reminded me of legacy projects I've seen at other schools. The pride that those kids take so many years later. There's probably kids still in town, all grown up now, that go by that and said, "That was a part of me. I was involved in it." I would just love to see some kind of a legacy project go back in there if they recreate what's there or they establish something different. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for SAISD to pick this one up and run with it.
I wonder, Carl.
Tommy, would you like to speak?
I guess. I wonder, Carl, if there's, if we could reprise that in some way, if there's other material that could be obtained that in fact could, and I like Larry's suggestion too, to see. And I like Larry's suggestion, too, to see if some of those folks in that picture might want to be involved. But to try to recreate that to the extent possible, the look of that out of a different product or a different material that might give the same look. Now, maybe the rust is what sets it apart and gives it the look they intended. So that would be another issue entirely. But, you know, maybe if we couldn't, and if that's not possible, maybe if we could find something else to go there, it will be blank without it.
Harry?
If we decide that we're going to replace it or take a different type of material, as Tommy said, to try to duplicate it, cost of metal today is outrageous. We'd have to figure out what that cost would be and where that money would come from if it was going to come from the city, that part of the budget, or if we get public partners to come in, I mean, private partnerships to come and help us. I don't disagree with what's been said, but my concern really is, is we've got a lot of people in that area, and with the condition of it, I don't want to see another piece fall off and somebody accidentally get hurt, so.
Is there a risk of something, you know, falling off and hurting somebody?
We've removed the biggest risk.
Yeah, there you go.
But it's continued to fall apart. I don't know that any of the spires will fall, but it's not in good condition.
Well, I think what we need, you know, I hate to have legacy projects go to waste. We tear them down, move them away, and nothing replaces it, and there you go. We need to have a game plan here. We need to have a game plan to replace some sort of art sculpture back in that park. And we don't expect the city to pay for it. I think we ought to create some sort of fundraising effort. There's a lot of scrap metal that I'm sure is available that's not so expensive to buy. See if we can't get an artist to do something with it. We need art in our parks. We need art. And I hate to see this thing come down, disappear. It doesn't make sense to me. We've got to have a game plan for this, not just tear it down and throw it away.
Would you like us to take it to the Public Art Commission and allow them to look at it? I mean, typically, the city, most all of the art we have is been donated through some entity. And we now, with our new sculptures, a lot of the bronzes and so forth, have a maintenance program that's established. This, of course, is different, and a lot of it, like Carl said, is design. And how it's, if it's trapping water and rusting, then, you know, those are flaws in the design. But if you want us to, we can take it to the Public Art Commission and allow them to start working on a plan of how they might, what they would envision there and who they might want to partner with as far as engaging them. We can talk to S.A.I.S.D. and see if they're interested.
We also have people like Howard College who teach welding classes, you know, and I think we have to take a look at all of the potential people who could be a part of this and make it a community project, inclusive of scrap metal being donated from people, artists looking at that and designing something, and then having the welding classes, if you will, put together what has been designed.
We'll take it and see if there's an art group who's interested in taking the lead on that and go from there. In the meantime, I will say the integrity of the structure, as you saw from the pictures, is very deteriorated. So I guess at this point, we can move forward on trying to see if there's a group that will take the lead on the design and a plan for what they'd like to see there. But as far as today's question, then, do you want us to let it stand? Or do you want us to go ahead and remove it?
I don't want to see it come down. I don't want a public, obviously, a public risk factor to it. So, I mean, I don't know if altors can take a look at it and say, "If we do the following two things, it'll be fine. Stabilize it until we have a game plan." That would be my suggestion. And see if we can't stabilize it for, until there's something to replace it with. And there might not be, but then you can report back to us on that.
Then we'll look and see if there's a way to weld something to it where it's not as visible, that will stabilize it temporarily. And if not, we'll come back to you and say, "That's just not possible," and we'll take action at that point.
Harry, you wanted to add something?
Couple of comments. The Public Art Commission has already recommended to take it down. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, second item is, is if we're going to keep it in, where the structure, the way it is, until we find something to replace it, I would suggest that we have a structural engineer take a look at it. Because, first thing, and I said this before, I don't want somebody to get hurt in there if a piece of that thing falls off. And we, as a council, did not take the opportunity to remove it because we knew the condition. So those two items, I mean, I don't disagree with the mayor that we should need to replace it with something, but in the same token, I don't want to see it stay there for a long period of time without us moving forward because I think there's a possibility that we could have some additional pieces come off of that.
Let's have a structural engineer look at it and see if we can stabilize it and then develop a game plan for it. You know, if you drive by that park, you realize you've seen that sculpture there, that piece of art, for a long, long time. And I don't want to just see it taken down and disappear and then leave a big hole there. We need to have a plan. And that plan should obviously include stability, stabilization, and taking away risk if there's a risk attached to it.
We'll also have that group when they look at it. I know there has been some design work that has been looked at for the overall layout of that park and what it might be in the future. So that might give an opportunity if we replace, whether you replace it in exactly the same location or it shifts one way or another based on what the future layout of the park might be, so. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to take action on something?
If we don't have a motion to approve the resolution, then we need a motion to deny that item.
For future consideration. Do we have to say that? Because we're going to have a plan. So I make a motion to deny the request to tear it down at this point. Is there a second? Second by Lucy. All in favor, say aye. Yeah, so it passes 5-0? I mean, 5-1? Is that a yes or a no, Harry?
That is a nay.
Okay, so 5-1. All right, we will now move into our regular agenda. Our regular agenda, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start with Item A, Consider Accepting the City's Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Single Audit. Gaila, are you here? Gaila, the first, and Tina, the first question I have is, last year, we had delivered to us on the Friday before the City Council meeting, a copy of this plan. So we had an opportunity to review it and create some questions attached to the review. I don't think I've received anything.
Mayor Tita Dierski, Director of Finance, are you referring to the actual financial report?
We had one last year that was delivered to us on the Friday.
It was presented in the background, Agenda Information, which I believe posted last Wednesday.
But do we have, did we get a final published report?
That is the final published report.
So we're not going to get a printed copy?
If you'd like a printed copy, we can absolutely send you one.
I would, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Thank you once again, on behalf of Armstrong, Bacchus, and Company, for engaging us to perform the audit for City of San Angelo and the single audit. We have PowerPoint today just to kind of go through the highlights of what is in the report that was attached to the background information. The purpose of an audit is to express opinions on the city's financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are not materially misstated, which means we don't come in and look at all the transactions. We look at areas of high risk. We look at areas that are very material to the financial statements. And so some items may not even be considered by us just because they're so small in nature. In the report, the city is composed of your primary government, which is all of the funds of the City of San Angelo, and it also includes one discreetly presented component unit, which is the City of San Angelo Development Corporation. That is included in the report. Not all funds are presented on the face of the financials towards the beginning. That is based on how material they are. And so the general fund, of course, being the major fund of your government, is always presented at the front. We always present Capital Improvement Fund because of the materiality of those transactions and the Debt Service Fund. Water and Sewer as well, because there are so many transactions that go through there. The new major fund this year, and we'll talk more about this in a little bit when I talk about the single audit, was your Intergovernmental Fund, which holds all of the grant funding, revenues, and expenditures that come through the City of San Angelo. You had an incredible grant year. And so it caused that fund to become major this year and is presented towards the beginning of the report.
Say that again.
You had such an incredible grant year. You had so many federal expenditures and awards that were received that the materiality caused that fund to become major, and now it's at the beginning of the report. All other funds of the city are aggregated and put into aggregate columns in your report. And then the details of those are presented towards the back of the report and combining schedules.
That's why it's hard to review all of this online.
There's a lot, too. It's 149-page report.
Yeah, it's too hard to do online.
Our opinions, so based on our audit, our opinions of the financial statements are that everything was presented fairly in all material respects. So it was a clean opinion. Some of the significant events for 2021, you sold the Ford Ranch, and those proceeds have subsequently been used to pay off the debt in 2022. You had a refunding debt which saved you $2.9 million, so that was a positive. And then one of the biggest...
What's a refunding debt?
A refunding debt is where you borrow an additional debt to pay off another debt, and you borrow at a lower interest rate, so you end up saving money over time. So your savings over time is almost $3 million. The most significant change to this year's audit is that you had an increase to net position or a net income to your city of $46 million. This is unusual, but a few things contributed to that. One, you received a lot of funding for the Coronavirus Relief and the American Rescue Plan Act funds that you haven't had in the past. You had the proceeds from the sale of the Ford Ranch. And then your other post-employment benefit plan expenses decreased significantly this year. So all of that led to your substantial net income for the year. On the citywide financial statements, which includes all funds of the city, your total assets were $736 million. Total liability is $473 million. Your total net position or your equity, right at $260 million. And then again, you had a $46 million increase to your net position. Very good year for the city. Here's just a chart. The top is a bar graph to show over the last three years, the bottom line being the current year, your change in net position, and then the total net position. So the very bottom line on this chart shows that because you had such a healthy change in that position this year, your total net position increased significantly. In addition to the financial statements, we also have to perform a single audit. And anytime you receive over $750,000 in federal funds, you have to have a single audit where we go in and audit the internal control and compliance over the major programs that are received. We issue a separate report. It's not part of the 149-page document. It's separate. And we do a lot of test work. We have to go in and there's a formula for which programs you test. We pick those. We test the internal control, the compliance. And then we report all of that to the federal Audit Clearing House. This year, your total grant expenditures were $14 million. And to put that in perspective from prior years, a significant jump. You've always raised right about the $4 to $6 million level, and this year you had so many additional grant funds received that it threw you up to $14 million. Very good year for the city. And that is all I have. Do you all have any questions?
We have questions from council.
What about the pension fund?
The pension fund is still showing a significant liability, as are most governments. So six years ago, you weren't required to report that liability on your financial statements. And then the Gatsby came out and then required it, and most governments were caught being underfunded. Well, the good news is, is you're not building that liability. It is decreasing over time. But it is still a liability to the city.
And so the plan with the financials that you present today, there's no risk that the city will default on the pension liability as we go forward?
I don't see a risk of that, as long as you'll continue funding the current required amounts going forward.
When you say the city had a very good year, knowing that there will not be federal grants available this year, as there has been last year, do you see any issues with the game plan here?
The thing about the federal funds is that for every dollar you receive, you have to spend. So it doesn't increase profit. It just so happened that some of the revenue came in this year, and it's going to be spent subsequent years. But the fact that you don't get grant funds doesn't significantly impact you every year because for every dollar received, you have to spend it for its intended purpose.
Are there any challenges, issues that you would put out there that we need to be aware of, that we should be concerned about, or that we should relook at?
No, ma'am. We didn't see any concerns.
Other questions? Larry?
Yes, ma'am. There were a number of findings, and they seem to be relatively small. I wondered if you were comfortable with the fixes on those particular problems.
We were. So there are three levels of findings that we can report. There's material weakness, which is the most significant.
Talk about that.
You didn't have any this year. And so material weakness is where we find something that is an internal control deficiency that if it hadn't been caught, could have created a material misstatement to the financial statement. You've had some in the past. You didn't have many this year, which was very good. The next level down is significant deficiency. It's enough to be concerned about but may not create a material misstatement. You also did not have any of those. The lowest level are just internal control deficiencies. And I don't feel like we wouldn't be, I don't feel like we'd be doing our job if we didn't come up with some recommendations to do things better. And so we did report a few of those. They're not material. We've discussed them in great detail with Audit Committee and with staff, who do a great job, by the way. And we're comfortable that they're on the right track.
What was the number one issue?
The number one issue? Inventory. Inventory controls were as tidy as they had been in the past. But they're actively working with the city's internal auditor, finance staff, and they're working with the inventory folks to get that corrected.
Other questions or comments from City Council? Do we accept this? Do we need a motion to accept this?
We do.
Okay, so moved by Harry to accept the city's fiscal year 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Do I have a second? A second by Tom, Tommy Hebert. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Gaila. We will move on to Item B, San Angelo Chamber of Commerce Economic Development 2021 Report. And Michael Looney, you're on.
All right, good morning, council. Good morning, Mayor, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to present this morning. I'm Michael Looney. I'm the Vice President of Economic Development for the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. And we're going to do a quick look at our 2021 year-end report. The four basic tenants of the Economic Development Department are economic reinforcement, legislative policy, workforce development, cooperation and innovation. Cooperation and innovation, that's probably one of the most important ones that we work on. And that is to provide business-to-business network opportunities to promote manufacturing, energy, technology, and agricultural sectors to the community, to strengthen entrepreneurial liberty, wealth-building opportunities, and to secure resources that are needed by these businesses. We work very closely with Tom Green County. We work very closely with the City of San Angelo Development Corporation, who is really our main partner. Overview, the five basic pillars of our mission is prospect generation. That is finding prospects to bring new companies into San Angelo, industrial companies. And those are your core business providers. Those are your core... Those are your core companies that provide what they call primary jobs, as opposed to retail. Industry recruitment, rail business recruitment. Obviously, the rail port is a big part of what we've accomplished in the past couple of years, which is a real anchor for our economy and for our growth with industry, and also for transloading, shipping, and logistics side of the economy. Economic gardening. The San Angelo Regional Manufacturers Alliance is a program that we created in 2017 as a means of bringing together our regional industrial leaders, so that we can understand better what the barriers to success are, including workforce, supply chain, and access to markets. And that has been a very popular program and a very successful program. It's based on the philosophy of economic gardening. Economic gardening is the basic practice of taking care of our own industrial companies first, creating relationships with those companies that helps us to figure out what other companies that they might work with from a partnership program would do well in San Angelo. So really, effectively, like I've said before, the mayor's heard this many times, we have an organization with over 100 manufacturers, fabricators, and energy service companies. We work with them regularly, and we've effectively deputized those companies to help us understand what industrial enterprises they have relationships with, so that we can bring them together, possibly bring them to San Angelo. And that's been very helpful. And then industrial career promotion and training. Boy, this is a big one. It is probably the biggest barrier that every city in Texas right now has, and that is workforce, that is trained workforce to fulfill these different important positions at these different primary job manufacturers. But all that said, our 2021 impact was six closed deals, 129 employer-created jobs, and a total value add of $79,232,000. So all things considered, coming out of a pretty ugly COVID situation that really put a damper on a lot of the supply chains and orders for materials, we felt like that was a good recovery year for economic development.
Explain that 79 million.
Yeah, that is, what that is, mayor, is that is the total value of the six transactions over a third-
Talk about what those six transactions are.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to get to that in just a second. In fact, I can jump ahead, and these are four transactions: Double J Lamb, Techmetric, Tricor Steel Manufacturing, and Korea Midland Power Company. The 79 is the total economic yield. That's job creation, that's salaries, that's capital investment over a 36-month period. We don't use a really long horizon, where some economic softwares that we do use project a 10-year horizon of what the economic yield is to the community. We think that's a little bit ambitious. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Go back to that screen. We'll keep on going, and then we'll get to the end.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. I'm going to interrupt your flow.
Sure, no problem. Prospect generation. Just to inform, city council, in 2021, we have 15 active prospects. Nine of them are on hold. Eighteen went inactive, meaning they either stayed where they were or moved to a different city, and seven complete. Request for information, this is through several site selectors that we work with, GSLI, State of Texas, and Day One Experts. We received 47 requests for information, RFIs. The criteria met was five, which we responded to. Probably the biggest challenges that we have are when we receive these RFIs from these site selectors, they have needs for existing buildings that are on the ground and ready to go, usually in that 150,000 to 250,000 square foot range, sometimes a lot, lot larger. And then employees. Many of these companies have needs for 500, 600, 700 employees. So we try to find that sweet spot where we know San Angelo can meet those criteria effectively and quickly. And then the last one is in the middle is acreage. And sometimes there are companies that have huge acreage needs. So we kind of look at it in two ways. You look at it, what are the transactions that we can capture and handle and accommodate in San Angelo? And then what are those that are kind of the mega deals that are looking nationally? Most of the prospects that we get are looking in Texas specifically, or in the Southwest region, which gives us a better chance of capturing those companies, as opposed to a company that's doing a national search. Probably 80% of the companies that we receive RFIs from, when we communicate with them, they're basically shopping. They're going to, they're probably going to stay where they are, but they're doing their due diligence and looking around at other communities, as they should. But in some cases, we are fortunate enough to get an audience with them, have a site visit to San Angelo, and get them. Going forward here to industry recruitment, I wanted to highlight a couple of points. What you'll notice here is that the spectrum, the variety of different types of companies tells a lot about San Angelo as a city that has the ability to accommodate a lot of different types of industries. So Double J Lamb, this is one that we worked on in 2020, and that project was, they purchased the old Ranchers Lamb facility, which Councilman Hebert toured not too long ago. That property was in really bad state of repair, and we were very fortunate to build a relationship, a very fast deal with Double J Lamb of Texas, which at the time was called Mountain States Rosen of Greeley, Colorado. They've hired so far 85 people. They've invested about $10 million into the facility. It is clean. It is fully operational, and it was a really big success for San Angelo. And what it also has done is it's helped to elevate our once historic lamb industry as well. And that was really why the Ranchers Lamb facility was built in the first place in the 90s, was to try to find a way to create that symbiosis between the lamb ranchers and a way to process them, as opposed to sending them to another state. There are only three lamb processing facilities in the U.S., and we have one of those three. And so we're very pleased with that transaction. I would also like to salute Teresa James, the legal department, and the real estate department, who worked really closely with us and with Double J's attorney on getting that transaction done as fast as it was. It was about a 30-day turnaround, which is pretty impressive. They're very pleased with San Angelo and with the workforce that they've been able to hire. Techmetric is a-
Being able to, is the local market providing enough lambs for them?
No, it's not. And part of it was because of their presence, it raised the lamb prices. And so that's not the reason, but it's one of the reasons we've been told. But they're actually bringing most of their lambs in from the Western Range. And it's probably because they have relationships with 249 different ranchers up in the Western Range from when they were in Greeley, and so they continue that relationship. Of note, they run exactly along the Ports to Plains Corridor, which runs almost directly from Greeley, Colorado to San Angelo, Texas. And so we wanted to highlight that. So good job on the Ports to Plains Corridor work. Techmetric, this is a small company based out of Houston. They've hired about 20 people in San Angelo. They are a software company that makes software for the automotive repair industry, a very innovative company. They secured a leased space downtown, and they've been hiring work-from-home and different professionals from the area. And they've been doing very well. And so we've enjoyed working with them.
Most of their employees, were they employees of another company?
Yes, they were. They sure were. That were, it was time for them to move on, and so they found a place to land at Techmetric. And what's great about it is that it's a satellite office for a Houston-based software company, very innovative company, high-growth company, and they've kept people here. They've kept professionals here that are in that industry. So we think that's a good win.
What's your expected growth in terms of employees?
Boy, last time we talked to them, they're looking at probably 40 people. Now, I'm not sure that they're going to hit that this year, but they started off with 12 when we helped find that real estate forum downtown, which you helped with as well. Thank you. And they're already at over 20, and their salaries are very strong. Leave it at that. Tricor Steel Manufacturing, this is a company that we recruited from Eden, actually. Small steel company, but has a wonderful future, and they're doing really well. It's 12 people, again, 12. They're a steel fabrication company that makes impact barriers for the Department of Transportation all over the United States. And they're a wonderful family-owned company. They pay good wages to their people. They've got a real esprit de corps when you go visit their facility on Pulliam. You can just kind of sense the pride. You can feel the pride, and they've got big plans to grow. And then finally, Midland, Korea Midland Power Company, as I said earlier, we do work with the county, because part of our funding comes from the county, and so we are able to reach into the county and work on projects that may not be able to land in the city limits, usually due to land size and facilities. Korea Midland Power Company is an interesting development. It is a foreign direct investment. This is a Korean company. It's basically the AEP, if you will, of Korea, and they built a $164 million solar power plant on Ratliff Road, which is under construction right now. So it's not a big job creator. It's just two full-time jobs, but it has a strong yield to Tom Green County and to the community because of its tax base. We don't work with very many solar power plants. We have one on the ground, Duke Energy on 2288, and then, of course, the new one, Korea Midland Power Company, also known as KomiPo on Ratliff Road. But we've, Tom Green County has kind of become the darling of a lot of renewables companies, especially in the solar arena, because the land is available, and the property owners are very interested in these kinds of transactions that can give them a monthly paycheck for up to 30 years. We like them because they provide a good revenue stream to the county without needing a lot of people. And so any company that can provide $164 million cap investment but no people, that's okay.
Were we, did we make sure when we worked with them on Highway 277 South that they were fully aware of the Ports to Plains Corridor and the need to expand?
Yep.
And widen 277 and would not get in the middle of that?
They're quite aware of that. And certainly, what's really nice about working with these companies is that they are absolute professionals. There's no questions. They work on these projects. We worked with them for three years on this project, and so they really do their homework. It's excellent engineering, and they're really great community partners, too.
Did they get a tax abatement from the county?
Uh-huh. They sure did, yes.
Do you know what it was?
It was a tax abatement for years 1 through 10, and then years 11 through 30 are at full levy. But during 1 through 10, KomiPo is paying a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, which is not quite, but almost about, close to 50% of what the normal tax yield would be, the tax bill would be. It's close to that. And that's just how they like to structure it. So they do a full abatement for years 1 through 10, but they have a payment in lieu of taxes called a pilot program, and that is sufficient for their tax, for their savings, so that they can invest that kind of money into the project. Okay, business recruitment. We're talking rail business recruitment. This is part of the Plains Trains and Automobiles. So one of the projects that the Chamber has worked on with COSIDC and with our consultant, Roger Horton of Shea Transportation, whom many of you know, has been the development of the San Angelo Railport. And this is a project that is under construction currently. They have 11,000 feet of track on the ground, out of a total of 18,000. The project is ahead of schedule. We have one confirmed tenant that has already run a train, last Sunday, their first train, onto the port, and eight active prospects. And so the, really, this is going to be a crown jewel for San Angelo, and it's already starting to have that impact of where we're getting calls and interest from companies that probably wouldn't have had a real strong reason to be in the San Angelo area, but with the access to this rail port, it's now changing their minds. And so now we're really becoming, and this is the point, this is the strategic objective, is to become a regional, international logistics and transportation hub for this part of Texas.
I want to make sure we point out, it's one of the best examples of a private-public partnership between COSIDC and Shea Transportation.
It is perfect. And Shea Transportation, which is the consultant, we also worked very closely with Texas Pacifico, as you would guess, and South Plains-Lamisa Railroad. When we looked at this project, and we started talking about it probably almost five years ago, the concept of doing this, and it was a way to get coil steel into San Angelo, and it just blossomed into much more than that. Our relationship with Shad Wisner, who owns South Plains-Lamisa Railroad, has been just truly spectacular. South Plains-Lamisa Railroad has a port in Slaton, Texas, that's similar to the one that's being built here. They also have a port in Pueblo, Colorado. And Mr. Wisner has invested a lot of his own money into this project, all of his own money, really. I mean, it's fully funded as a private operation, but the key is to keep it a democratically-run and open port, so that we, all of our companies that want to have service for rail can take advantage of it. And as I've said before, in some cases where a private developer builds a rail port, if you will, for a community, they're really doing a build-to-suit for one or two special commodities. And if those commodities dry up, they will close the port. We saw that happen south of San Antonio. This is a different situation. And so Shad Wisner has been a gem to work with and a true partner to San Angelo, and we owe him a lot. And we hope he does extremely well, and we think he will. San Angelo Regional Manufacturers Alliance, as I mentioned before, that is really the platform of our business retention and expansion economic gardening efforts. Two that I wanted to mention, SMC Global. It seems like every year, when I give my presentation, SMC Global is on it, and it's because they're kind of the company that continues to give back to San Angelo. They are now on their fourth expansion. They bought land last year on Dan Hank's, behind a current facility, the one that we've been to, on Old Cristovala Road, and they continue to just do so well. They've got 20 people on staff right now. They continue to hire. They pay very good salaries. There has not had to be a whole lot of public investment, public-private investment from COSIDC at all. They're putting their own private money into their developments, and they currently have four facilities in San Angelo, one of which is the old RG Berry Building, which is 85,000 square foot warehouse on Loop 306, which had sat vacant for a long time. So it's just been a real joy to work with this company and see them investing in San Angelo, their emotional engagement, their interest in the community. And we were told by Sean Carter a few weeks ago, who is their comptroller from Kershaw, South Carolina, he said that the SMC Hydroization Facility is going to be their United States standard, and it is going to be the most high-tech facility that they have in their United States arsenal.
What's your expected growth in terms of employees?
They're probably going to get up to about 40. They're heading that direction. And it's really going to be reliant also on scientists and chemists and drivers. And of note, one thing that was brought to light when we were meeting with Sean a couple of weeks ago is that they have a very robust hiring program at ASU with especially the chemistry students and the engineering students. And they were, they're very excited about that relationship, and we use that a lot. I mean, we sell ASU, especially engineering, chemistry, mechanical engineering, physical engineering, a lot, and that is very impressive with the companies that we speak to, because a lot of them really want to know that you've got that education-based pipeline supply of talent. Air Motor Windmill Company, boy, here's another one. It was an expansion that they committed to. We worked very closely with them last year. In fact, Nick Omen, general manager of Air Motor, is here with us today, and that was done rather quickly, because they acquired their biggest competitor nationally. And so Air Motor Windmill, I guess you could say, kind of doubled in size within a several month period. And so we've enjoyed that relationship. I don't remember how many employees they have. Nick, you might speak to that.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three employees. Thank you, Nick. And continuing to grow and thrive. Okay. Industrial career promotion and training, as I said before, so important for us to be involved and have a stake, a controlling stake in understanding and implementing ways that we can train young people, or retrain people who are going from one career to another. SME Prime, this is a project that was kicked off about three years ago by Mike Berry. And for those who don't know, Mike Berry is, he works with me now. We're partners at the Chamber. I hired him in October, and he came to us from Ethicon, where he was for 10 years, as their director of training. And before that, he is an Air Force Academy graduate, who was in the U.S. Air Force as an intelligence officer for 10 years before that. It's amazing that such a young person can accomplish so much in such a quick period of time. But SME Prime was really his idea, and that is a program that is designed to introduce high school students to practice certification and theory in the engineering sector. And that program- And that program was supported, the seed program, and we're only the second high school in Texas to have an SME Prime program. That was promoted by COSIDC, which contributed $150,000 to that program. Ethicon, Principal LED, and then the Chamber of Commerce chipped in. And this project is now in the formation stages, and we expect that it will become fully activated by the later part or early part of next year, and we'll begin putting out trainings to students at the high school level.
What's the difference between what you expect next year and what's going on right now? So it's been two years in building the program. What does that two years mean in terms of building?
Yeah, it took a while to get the program stood up with getting the equipment and getting the understandings, understanding from Howard College and SAISD as to what their role is in administering the program. And so that took about two years to do.
So what is that program? I mean, are we, what are we teaching? Mike?
Great, thank you.
I'm going to have Mike Berry come speak about it, because he knows more about it than anybody.
Hi, Mike Berry. So real quick, about SME Prime, it's a, from start to finish, it's a three-year program. Okay, so year one was 2021. And primarily, what takes place in year one, but a lot of the money goes to is deciding on doing market research within the local area, what the employers want, the donor employers specifically, but all primary industrial manufacturing employers. What came back from that is the curriculum that is going to be built with the rest of the money. And what you see up there is that is industrial maintenance and mechatronics and robotics. So that's the curriculum that was decided upon based off the needs of the local area, the needs of those two donor companies. From there, they start buying equipment. So last year was the first piece of equipment. They did a precision measuring piece of equipment. What is involved in that is not just buying the equipment, but then certifying the instructor on how to use and then actually instruct so they can certify their students. In addition to, they start building out and fleshing out what that curriculum looks like from a freshman all the way to senior, right? And so a little bit of a look ahead as to where we are already within the first quarter of '22, that curriculum is now done. They have purchased three more pieces of equipment. Some of that robotic is being set up later this week. So as we talk next year about that, we'll look at where a bigger chunk of that money was spent, which is on more equipment, certifying more instructors to be able to teach that equipment, to be able to certify their students. The ultimate idea here is that when students identify that they want to be part of this track in the CTE programs at San Angelo ISD, whether Lakeview or Central, they will come out not only with college credit, they will likely come out with an industry-based certification right out of high school, so they can go straight into the workforce and start making money, building a living for themselves. Or they will also be able to go feed right into ASU's engineering program for the mechanical engineering and civil engineering. The idea is, back to Michael's previous statement regarding economic guarding, this is how we continue to grow our own and incentivize our local students and families that schools are good here, you're going to stay here, and you can enter the job market right out of school, because there are companies like Ethicon, Principal AD, and so many other that have a job ready for you right out of high school.
Sounds fabulous. I'm glad that you brought it to the table and you're overseeing it, because I think it's a great win for San Angelo and the business community. So I'm very proud and excited about that program. Thank you.
Thanks, stay up there. You know, I'll tell you what, that concludes our formal remarks. If there's any other questions you have, we're happy to answer them. I wanted to say for just a second what a privilege it has been to work with Mike Berry. He is intelligent, he is articulate, and he loves the manufacturing sector, because that's where we sort of borrowed him from. And it has just been a pleasure to work with Mike. It has brought a whole new spirit of innovation to our office. We still very much enjoy working with COSIDC and with all of our other economic development partners. And like I've said before, all of us are economic developers.
Mike Berry, are you taking note of this so that when your review is done, that he repeats all these things that he's saying right now?
I'm going to save the recording.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. But that concludes our presentation. If you have any other questions, we're more than happy to answer them.
Yes. Larry?
You were referring back to Double J. You indicated that most of the lands being processed are from other areas. My question is, is there an increased interest or a rejuvenation of lamb growing here?
Oh, there is. It's just, as we asked the question of Jay Hassebrook, who's the owner of Double J, and he said, just getting them born, getting enough of them.
Birthing.
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 Made. So that's, it is having a revitalization effect, and it will continue to do so. But the feedstock needed for the facility was so great that it just overwhelms what they could produce regionally. So, but they're going to get there.
Karen, do you have any questions or comments? Lucy?
Tommy, I only thank you so much for all your hard work.
Harry?
I can't say this enough, but the partnership, the strength of the partnership between COSIDC and the Chamber Economic is so great that I see a bright future in bringing additional businesses here and strengthening the ones that we've got. So thank you. Appreciate it. Guy to you and your crew. Mike?
Tommy?
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things. I did have the opportunity, thanks to Michael, to tour Double J. I want to give a shout out to a local San Angelo person that was involved in that. From the real estate standpoint out of Amarillo, a guy named, I know him as Tommy. He goes by Tom now, but Tom Horton, Lee Horton's younger brother. Tom had a part of that, getting, helping them come to San Angelo, which is, kudos to Tom, because he lives in Amarillo, and there is a lot of lamb production in and around North Texas. But he had enough soft spot in his heart for San Angelo, Texas, that he helped us get the old.
Rancher's lamb.
Thank you. Rancher's lamb facility filled with Double J, number one. Number two, SMC Global, they are true community partners. Michael mentioned that a couple of times. There was an issue that came up a couple of years ago at one of their facilities that just happened to be in my district, and I had some folks call about it. Michael and I talked about it. Michael talked to the SMC Global folks about it, and we were able to work through that. They didn't have to back off of their project. They worked with Michael and were able to do that project at just one of their other facilities. They had enough concern that, of the concerns that were raised by the community, that they said, yes, we hear that, and we're not going to force that. We're going to, we're going to continue to do that. So thanks to SMC Global, Michael, for you, for working with them to help them be able to accomplish what they needed to, but at a different location. Thanks.
Thank you all very much. We will now move on to Item C on the regular agenda, discussion and consideration of the following items related to the Property Casualty Fund. One, discussion on the impact of the recent claims history and the related increase in the premium contribution to the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool. And two, first public hearing and introduction of an ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, for one-time transfer of $480,000 from the Workers' Compensation Fund to the Property Casualty Fund. And I think we have Charles Hagan here today. Thank you. You're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Managers. Yeah, so we had a little bit of a tough time with the 320 account this year. We had a lot of events that helped deplete the fund balance. And so staff's recommending for a transfer of funds of $480,000 from the Workers' Comp Fund, which is the other fund that we manage. I haven't worked this one before, so. There we go. So some of the items that have impacted the fund was the rerating of the premium contribution from Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool. That's our excess insurance carrier. It was a result of an annual increase of $137,000. This is primarily due to catastrophic events, because that's usually when we go to them, we have a very high deductible, so we don't go to them unless we absolutely need to.
What was that event?
That would have been back in 2020, the hail event. It was started back then, and it's carried forward throughout the years. In 2020, we had three storms, so we paid three deductibles, actually four deductibles, because one was an auto deductible, one was a property deductible. Then in 2021, we hit the freeze, and we hit another deductible. So through over those past few years, they've kind of taken away from us. And then you add in the current and prior year automobile accidents that are both internal and external. We could, and somebody hits a traffic signal light, you know, we'll cover that. However, the amount of damage that can be done to one of those, obviously, is very expensive. So there we have 137,500. And then we have law enforcement liability, which we currently have worked through a settlement with one, but we haven't yet to pay it, so we need that money to pay that settlement. When it does come, we expect that to come real soon.
So are you saying that there were accidents when our people were at fault, and so we're paying? Or is it, can you just describe that?
Yes, ma'am, it's both. If the department has an accident and we're at fault, we actually internally bill them a deductible of $1,000, but then the risk fund covers the remainder of it. And then if the other side, if we're not at fault, hopefully the other party has insurance or enough insurance to cover the damage, but it doesn't always work out that way. So then we end up taking a hit when they don't have enough insurance or insurance to cover the costs. And then we have the law enforcement liabilities. Now, this budget amendment, it's not intended to add these numbers altogether to equal out. This is just what we need to remain solvent going forward.
You want to talk about, you say the law enforcement liability, 300,000, the Miller, Strack, and Shapiro, Shapiro, what was that?
So those are the three law enforcement lawsuits that are in place that we currently are tracking. Miller has come to a settlement, but we need the money to make that payment. We have yet to, they have not asked for the money just yet, so we're hoping that by the time we get this approved and through, we'll have the money funded to take care of that payment.
I can add to that.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Miller, we do have a negotiated settlement that is working its way through the court system because there's a juvenile involved. Strack is not really moving right now, but there is potential liability there. Shapiro, the court did dismiss that case, so we won't have any future liability unless they file an appeal, which is not anticipated.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, the, to approve a related budget amendment for a one-time transfer fund of the worker, from the Workers' Compensation Fund from 330 to 320 of $480,000. And the budget amendment will be presented as a separate agenda item. I'm sorry.
So, okay.
You're asking us to approve, I guess, Item C, regular agenda, Item 2, is that correct? The first part is just the discussion on the impact?
Yes, sir.
Does that wipe out the bud, I mean, does that take away all the money in that fund?
We were originally planning on, sorry, Brian Kendrick, Director of Human Resources Risk Management. We were originally intending to bring the budget amendment as a separate item, because we thought there might be more, so I apologize for that typo in there. This is just, in a few seconds, Tina will get up and she'll show you the budget amendment. It is actually part of this item, but we'll go ahead and continue on. Charles is going to go over kind of the fix that we have for future years so that we don't get in this situation again. We've tried to think of this for more of a, you know, running a business, doing this more like State Farm or GEICO would than we've done it previously. So he's going to speak to that now.
So this is not very specific to this, but obviously, when you're starting to take a look at these kinds of budget amendments, it's a lot of money. What are we doing in terms of working on terms of training to ensure we don't have these kinds of big-dollar problems?
Are you referring to?
There's not a lot we can do about the weather.
Yeah.
Well, the weather, you can't. Accidents, you can't.
Yeah. So I think that's what, he's getting ready to talk about it.
Right. So we do go over defensive driving. We have that program internally that we handle with all departments where somebody's driving a vehicle. So as far as our activity, we do train to try to offset that. Then, you know, there's additional training at the department level for the police that I'm, I think, I believe Chief Fincher is here, that he could speak to. So yes, we do train our own folks. Of course, like Tommy mentioned, the weather, we can't, we can't control.
Well, we can, and we understand that the Texas Municipal League, we haven't had an increase from them in how many years?
It's been six years since they rerated us. And I will say that, you know, kind of a shout out to the Finance Department, Tina and Ryan helped Charles and I as we met with TML. And we actually bought that, the original thing was close to $200,000 increase, and so we reduced that by a good $60,000 by kind of modifying what we, taking a look at what is it that we are covering, should that be self-insured, and then looking at the deductible levels for various items as well. So we did buy that down quite a bit before we came to you.
Good.
And now he'll speak to how we're going to fix this in the upcoming year.
The fixer.
Jump right on over to the fix. Non-catastrophic and auto property costs that are completely self-insured will be divided by covered assets and charged out proportionally. So we'll look at each department, how much they have per asset, and then they will bill against that asset. TML IRP-specific premiums such as errors and emissions will be combined with deductible cost projections and charged out by covered department. So within the policies that we have with TML IRP, there are some policies that are very specific to departments, such as the law enforcement liability or the airport liability. Errors and emissions will cover a broader range, so that will also be spread out across the board. The TML IRP general catastrophic premiums such as auto property flood will be divided by the covered, again, by the covered assets and charged out proportionally. And administrative costs for keeping the risk management fund, or the risk department operating will also be included in that. And this would be the budget amendment proposed by staff and produced by finance.
Are there questions from any of council members? Tommy?
This is more of a random question. Do we have a consulting actuary that reviews these sort of things, that they say you are funding at appropriate levels based on what we perceive risk and so forth, which is what actuaries assess is the risk? So is that something, have we run this through our consulting actuary? Do we have a consulting actuary?
We use an actuary to look at our funds and check our fund balances and give us directions to where the fund balances need. But that's pretty much what they do. They just look at the numbers and give us direction where we need to set established fund balances at like 70% and 90%.
Any further questions from council? With none, then we will, I will have a motion for approval on, do we need a motion on this or wait till Tina does?
Yeah, let's go ahead and have Tina present, and then we'll do a motion together.
Okay.
So Mayor, the requested budget amendment is for $480,000 out of the Workers' Comp Fund balance. You asked earlier whether the fund balance in that fund was adequate to cover this amount, and yes, it is. I won't say that it's overly, I wouldn't say that there's too, yeah, overly flush, but there is enough to cover it. There's over $2.4 million in that fund balance. And with this plan going forward of fixing the Property Casualty Fund, we will ensure that that fund is adequately contributed to as well.
Based on current claim trends. If claims continue to grow, then it will be, it will continue to be a problem. So your questions about playing good defense are appropriate.
And, you know, we'd like some rain.
Without the, without the damage.
And if I may, the, some of the things that we're doing with Property Casualty now, we worked with Tina and her staff as well three years ago on Workers' Comp, and we've made adjustments that have made that one a little more healthy than, and healthy enough to handle this situation. And so hopefully, the changes that we're making now to Property Casualty will have that same effect, and we won't have to have this discussion again.
We don't lack hard-earned income, revenue for the city to go towards these kinds of issues. It's kind of heartbreaking. So with that, I need a motion to approve the budget amendment. It'll move by Karen, seconded by Tommy. Any public comment? With none, we will vote all in favor of this budget amendment of 480,000. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, five, six to zero. Motion approved, five, six to zero. Item D, first reading of public hearing of an ordinance re-adopting Chapter Eight offenses and nuances, Article 8.07, Miners Division Two, curfew of the Code of Ordinances of the City of San Angelo. And we have Chief Tracy Venture here today. Thank you, welcome.
Council, how are you all? Good morning. Assistant Chief Venture, San Angelo Police Department. What I have is a presentation for review and discussion on an ordinance of a juvenile curfew. As y'all know, the ordinance was originally adopted in 1996 as a preventative tool.
Hold the microphone a little closer, Tracy, thank you.
As a preventative tool for juvenile delinquency and crime. It's been very effective over the years. And with that, open for discussion, questions?
Would you talk to us about what the language in that is, so?
Yes, ma'am, the curfew starts, it goes during the weekdays, the curfew, any juvenile under the age of 17 has to be either in the company of a parent or home after 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and then on the weekends, it runs from 12:01 or midnight to 6:00 AM the next morning as well. And that's, that's pretty much the hours. There are a lot of exceptions in there with a parent, a school event, a guardian, stuff like that, that allows them not to get in trouble.
You know, I love, love the ordinance, I think it has great intentions. How do you patrol it and manage it?
The officers work in the street, encounter people throughout the night for various things, whether it's a call for service, such as an alarm at a local school Saturday night where some juveniles had broke in and done some damage and were arrested, or just walking down the street and appear to be very young. It varies.
That's a tough challenge.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me.
Questions for Chief Venture? Larry?
One of the purposes, I assume, is to reduce crime rate. Is there any way you can quantify the reduction in petty crime, whatever else, based upon this ordinance?
That would be difficult. I can tell you, the crime rate did fall this year as compared to last year. But as far as juveniles, we do keep juvenile statistics very accurately, and I can, I can tell you the number of juvenile arrests in curfew hours. But as far as to quantify that, how it relates to the crime decrease or increase, that would be difficult. Yes, sir.
I was also curious, it's alluded to that there's a juvenile curfew processing office. I wondered where this was.
The processing office is in the juvenile office and the desk duty officer of the police department. It serves, when this first started, it was manned 24, or during curfew hours. It's only manned now by a police officer during the workday. If it has to be opened up and activated, an officer who is assigned will be manning that office until we can find a guardian for that.
Are there plans to have a specific office in a new police building?
If, it's already part of it, because it's CID and juvenile is there as well, but we will have to do that when a new police facility takes place, yes, sir.
Any questions for Chief Venture? Tommy?
I was on the council in '96 when we adopted this, yes, I am that old. And if my memory is clear, Chief Venture, one of the main reasons then, as I assume still today, is really to help you all help address any juveniles on the street that have no reason to be on the street. And when, before we had this, you all didn't have a tool, really, to deal with that.
Yes, sir.
So that was one of the main reasons, 30, almost 30 years ago, that this was implemented. So, as far as I know, it has been reauthorized every time it has been presented. Mayor, I would make a motion to reauthorize it again.
Motion by Tommy is seconded by Harry. Any public comment? I would say the following, I know that when school lets out, this thing jumps like crazy, and I know the difference it makes when we have the ability to arrest these people who do a lot of negative graffiti work in some of our cherished areas, so thank you for doing that. With any public comment, other than my comment? And we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. We will move on to Item E, first reading of public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Administration and Personnel, Article 2.07, Boards, Committees, and Commissions Regarding One, Section 2.07.001, Organization and Procedure Clarifying the Conflict of Interest Provision. And Two, Section 2.07.061, Creation, Members Clarifying the Recent Changes to Dividing the River Corridor Into Three Areas. Julia?
Yes, thank you. The first item was a conflict of interest provision that was adopted in 2020, and what we didn't realize is that we were saying that any member of an organization that accepted funding from the city could not serve on our COSA DC Board. So we're just wanting to make that more restrictive and pull that up to a board member level. That way, we're not disqualifying most individuals in the city from serving on COSA DC. And then for the second board, so the River Corridor was split into three different districts, the River Corridor Downtown District, and then the Cultural District areas, but the provision that we currently have in our code only states River Corridor. So essentially, we cut by a third, if you will, the type of people that are able to serve on the DHRC. And so we're wanting to open that up again to all the people that previously were able to serve on the board.
Makes sense. Any questions for Julia?
I have approval, Mayor.
Tommy moved for approval, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes six, zero. We will now move into our closed session, the executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551. Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 316.879 Acres, the Sarah R. Robertson S-0178, A-8474. We will now move into closed session. Meeting is being called back to order at 10:55 AM. There are no announcements to be made following the closed session, so we will, in fact, move on to Item Eight on the Agenda, Follow-Up and Administrative Issues, which was to consider any items in executive session, which there are none. So then we will consider approving various board nominations, the Public Housing Authority, Troyce Wilcox to a sixth term, Monette Mullenair and Becky Fraser, both to a fourth term, all ending April 2024. And I asked Julia, because when you say a sixth term and a fourth term, it would mean that there aren't term limits for these positions, and there aren't term limits in these positions because they're governed by a higher authority.
Yes, they're governed by the Public Housing Authority, and they are not included in our boards and commissions under the Code of Ordinances.
So with that, may I have a motion for approval of the Public Housing Authority, Troyce Wilcox, Monette Mullenair, and Becky Fraser, please?
May I have you approve?
Lucy made a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Any public comment considering these individuals? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Are there any announcements in consideration for future agenda items? Hearing none, may I have a motion for adjournment, please? So moved, seconded by Lucy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes six, zero as well. This, May 3, City Council meeting is in adjournment. Thank you very much.